I am ready to roll.
Okay. Okay, so good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, October 12th, 2021. The time is now 2:01 PM. This is our weekly business meeting. Attending Commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Filios. And I'm going to ask Keith, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not both of us could do it.
Yeah, I didn't specify which one. This is called a dual pledge, whatever. Okay, consent calendar, please.
I move we approve the consent calendar as listed on our business meeting agenda for October 12th, 2021.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion is carried. Payables list, please. Do you want to take that?
I got it.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
I know, small writing. A week of, I move we approve the payables for the week of October 4th through the 8th, 2021 in the amount of $2,170,944.71, along with jury panel payments in the amount of $5,677.68.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion is carried. Do we have any changes to the agenda? None? Moving on to the first of our action items. Number one, yearly lease agreement for the Blackwell Island Marina Parks and Waterways.
Nick actually had a family emergency, and so I don't-
I can speak to it, Commissioner, if I can.
Can you? Yeah, go right ahead.
Just come up to a microphone. Thank you.
So Jamila Holmes speaking.
These little goodies on the table, too.
Commissioners Jamila Holmes, civil deputy prosecutor, for the record. The annual lease agreement by which Cootney County leases its Parks and Waterways boat slip from Hagadon Hospitality is before you. It's an increase of, I want to say around $350 from last year. And as you'll see, a sublet was authorized and the city of Coeur d'Alene pays for one half of that yearly lease amount. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So we're leasing and they're subleasing from us?
Correct. They sublease one slip within the boathouse from the county.
Yeah, and this is pretty standard. We do this every year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Hey, Bill, you want to take that?
Yeah, I move that we approve the yearly lease agreement for Blackwell Island Marina with Parks and Waterways.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion's carried. Thanks, Jamila. Item number two, grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for AIP 3-16-0010-052-2021 at the airport. Stephen?
Commissioner Stephen Kierger, for the record, this is actually more of a concurrence because Devin Filios and Prosecutor Barry McHugh actually already signed this grant. So this is more of a concurrence that we are accepting this and approving this grant. This is for the SRE building design work. It's in the amount of $399,397. There is the caveat with this that if in two years we do not build a structure, we will have to reimburse that money as well.
Actually, so there's like a two-year and a four-year thing. If-
It's two years if you have to, the FAA has to provide us funding for it, and then two additional years-
To build?
We had to build it.
So is the 399 100%?
100% of the SRE design portion.
Of the design portion?
They found eligible.
Got it.
Right.
Many hours.
And so we've already spent money on the admin design?
Yes.
Portion. Okay, and who is that with?
Alliance Architecture.
Okay.
Which was part of the engineering selection process that we did three, two years ago now.
Right. And then as far as the admin building goes, we don't have anything in writing from the FAA saying that we have to move our admin?
So actually, the, part of the, one of the items that they actually have listed on their CIP and we have listed on our CIP is the demolition of what they're calling the terminal building, which is our building-
Right.
In 2024. And fixing the geometry of our, of the two end.
Right.
And we still can separate out ours as well. The issue is, is our building is sitting inside a safety area and is long-term. No one else can be in it except for us. It's in the way of the future geometry issues.
Sure.
And it's one of the items where you have a meeting with the FAA to talk about CIP tomorrow.
Perfect.
While you're demolishing our building, you should pay more money to-
Right, to get it constructed.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion, Bill, anything?
No.
Motion?
I move that we acknowledge of the acceptance of the grant agreement, AIP 3-16-0010-052-2021.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, Stephen. Item number three, agreement for the First Amendment to the hazardous wildland fuels. And this is the yet mechanical aspect, I guess, treatment. Resource Management Office, Kim Riley.
It's Kim Riley, for the record. This is an amendment which extends the performance period through October 31, 2021. Due to the severe conditions that we had through July with fire hazards, they were not able to perform any work during July and much of August. So this just extends it out through October 31st, and it has been reviewed by legal.
Okay, questions? Motion? Bill?
I move that we approve the agreement slash First Amendment to hazardous wildlands fuels mechanical treatment with RMO.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motions carried. Item number four, granted, excuse me, grant adjustment notice for the 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant with the Idaho Office of Emergency Management and the Cootney County OEM. Rachel?
Rachel Irish, for the record. This is the award of additional funds due to overmatching under the 2019 EMPG grant, which runs our office. This is seeking your approval. Unfortunately, when, this came right at the time when Tiffany was signing all the public assistance documents. So she signed this one, too. But, so it has been executed, although we haven't gotten the funds yet. But, so we need your approval on this.
Okay, Rachel, how much are we talking about here?
It's about $17,000.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
Well, it's kind of, Rachel, are you handling the next one, too?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll ask you that question with that item instead of this one.
Okay, there's the 17,000. Okay, motion?
I move that we approve the grant adjustment notice for the 2019 Emergency Management Performance Grant with the Idaho Office of Emergency Management.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion carried. Item number five, estimate for the installation of the generator, the electrical work with CTC Electrical Contracting, once again, our OEM office. Go right ahead, Rachel.
Yes, and Tom Reed's on the line if you have any questions about the contract. This is the contract with the electrician to install the generator that we got from the fairgrounds in 911. And he's also going to correct some of the electrical deficiencies in the building. And that funding was allocated with remaining CARES funds.
Yeah, questions?
So I guess, going back to the 17,000 from the last item, is that earmarked for something? Does that have certain restrictions on it? Or can that go to some of the repair that's needed as well?
It could go on some of the repair. It depends, because it's EMPG funding, so we would have to make sure that it is, that it works approved through that fund. So some things would and some things wouldn't. If you're talking about the generator in specifically, it probably could be allocated to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill, questions?
Nope.
Motion?
I move that we approve the estimate for installation of the generator and electrical work with CTC Electrical Contracting and the Office of Emergency Management.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion carried. Item number six, certify 2021 L1 levy rates by the auditor.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeanette Bradley, Auditor's Office, for the record. I'm requesting at this time the approval for the tax year 2021 levy rates listed in the Cootney County L1. Just kind of a summary of what's happened this tax levy season so far. The county had four school districts that requested an extension for consideration on the emergency levy, although none of those did go out for a supplemental emergency levy this year. We had one city file for an extension due to the loss of office personnel. That was the city of Harrison. They'd met the requirements and all forms have been submitted to the county. One city has yet to similar, or to submit their levy documents and publish budget for the 2021 year, and that will be the city of Hutter. We have talked with the Tax Commission, and they are willing to work with them because we found out their city clerk has been ill with COVID. So, other than that, some of the general information we have were there were three districts using foregone in their budget this year. That was the city of Dalton Gardens, Howser Fire Lake Protection, and Casey Fire Rescue. Excuse me, a year-to-year date comparison has been provided for you in another document. At this time, with all the exceptions of the levy rates have been entered into the state tax commission's website.
Thank you. Any questions? Motion?
I move that we certify the 2021 L1 levy rates.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion's carried. Thank you. Item number seven, approval for the purchase of APX 4,000 radios for our bailiff. Anyone on for that? Anyone going to talk to this?
I can.
Go, go right ahead.
I guess Pete didn't know he was supposed to be on here. So in the budget, there were approved radios for the bailiffs. And this is the request for the purchase. The one thing I'm not clear on is if this was, it's approved in the budget, it's just if it came from fund balance or if it came from ARPA funds is the only thing that I'm not clear on at this point. So it's, Julina's saying?
We haven't discussed this at all with the ARPA, so-
Okay, okay, then I'm gonna guess that it's-
It's gonna be fund balance?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Better to make, better to make that assumption if it comes out of, if we get a bluebird out of our ARPA, that's great. Okay. No other questions? Bill, motion?
I approve that the, for the purchase of APX 4,000 radios for the bailiff's office. I'm disappointed there's nobody here to speak to that.
It happens.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion's carried. Item number eight, Second Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding, also known as an MOU with the Office of the Idaho Attorney General and our civil prosecuting attorney, Jamila Holmes. Again, go right ahead, Jamila.
Thank you. What you have before you is the Second Amendment to the MOU between the Attorney General's Office and the county, which provides for Paul Farina's role as a task force agent in the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force. I can represent to the board that Barry McHugh is extremely pleased with Paul's performance and his keeping, you know, really the most vulnerable in our community safe. But if you have specific questions about what it is he does and numbers, then Paul would be best to answer that. Otherwise, this is a continuation. This is an ongoing agreement, and I'm happy to answer any questions about the agreement itself that you might have.
Questions?
My only question is, it's not specific to Mr. Farina. It will continue on to the person who takes his place.
It is specific to Mr. Farina. He was selected because of his specific skills and abilities. And so in the future, should Mr. Farina no longer fill that position, it would require working with the Attorney General's Office to select a new individual. It, it's not just automatic.
Okay, Paul, you have to stay.
Paul, did you want, did you want to comment? This is a very, a very worthwhile. You can put a plug in for your efforts and on behalf of children. Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you for supporting me for almost, well, it's been 10 years, so I appreciate it. Commissioner Duncan mentioned that I will be retiring in December, so I'll be passing the torch to someone else. So we have a lot of qualified applicants that we're looking at right now. In fact, we're gonna have a meeting at 3:00. Friday was the closing date, so we should have some further information in a few weeks.
Okay.
Well, you'll be missed.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it.
Any questions for Paul? Thank you for your, how long have you been doing this?
10 years now.
In this role.
In this role. 33 years total for law enforcement. It's, so, it's time. It's time.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you, sir.
Motion?
I move we approve the Second Amendment to the Memorandum of Understanding with the Office of Idaho Attorney General for the position with the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, the motion's carried. Thank you once again, Paul.
Thank you, sir.
Item number nine, reapprove the budgeted item for the purchase of the Bobcat for our maintenance department and KCSO.
Who's Tom?
Tom?
Tom Reed, yes, Tom Reed, Sheriff's Maintenance, for the record. Pursuant to Policy 930, I am asking for your approval to purchase Skid steer from a private party in the amount of $39,500. $47,000 was budgeted, and we've had a hard time even getting something that priced, so.
Well, you did well, it sounds like.
I've included some comparisons, and right now, most of the local places are two years out for equipment. And then some of the stuff in the Midwest, there's a shipping charge, so I think we've got a pretty good deal here.
When do you expect?
For the time.
When do you expect delivery, Tom?
As soon as it's paid for, we can pick it up. It's just down the street.
Oh.
Yeah, it's just in Hayden.
Cool, okay. Motion?
I move that we reapprove the budgeted item purchase of a Bobcat for the maintenance department in KCSO.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion carried. Item number 10, agreement for natural gas service to the new hangar on Sensor Avenue with Avista at the airport. Stephen?
Commissioners, this isn't quite correct. It's not Sensor Avenue. This is actually Gulfstream Road.
Oh, okay.
That's the next two items are. This is the Gulfstream Road area. This is a development agreement with Avista to get natural gas to there. The cost to us is zero for the natural gas. So it's just an agreement stating that we're, the typical agreement that anytime Avista wants installations items.
Okay.
Sure. Is that a problem?
We're gonna have a generator on. I know, I know.
I'm sorry, if you're on the phone, can you mute yourself until it's your turn? Thank you.
Motion?
I move that we approve the agreement for the natural gas service to the new hangar area on Gulfstream Road.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion carried. Were 10 and 11 the same?
No.
No, one's a-
Oh, electric, I guess one is electric. I'm sorry. Okay, item number 11, which is the agreement for electrical, electrical service to the new hangar on Gulfstream Road with Avista. Go right ahead.
Stephen Kierger, again, for the record, this is for the electrical service for all the utility, or all the hangar development on the north side. It's in the amount of $25,135. We've already notified everyone that we're gonna be dividing this up the same way we divided up the other utilities. We've already sent out an application to everybody as well. So it should be, all the costs will be borne by the actual tenants.
Okay.
Um, do you, you probably don't even know this. Is there any way to tell that doing it this way was more cost-effective for the tenants?
Uh, we have no way to know. My, the thing, though, is it'd be, you're saving money on pipe, you're saving money on mobilization, you're saving Avista seven different call-out times. So just in that, you're probably saving a significant amount here. They may have been able to negotiate some sort of trade agreement in place that would have been significantly cheaper, but we wouldn't have probably seen as good of a product.
Okay.
Okay. No other questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the agreement for electrical services to the new hangar area on Gulfstream Road in Avista.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion carried. Thank you, Stephen. Item 13, contract for three fixed route buses with Creative Bus Sales and our Resource Management Office. Go right ahead, Kim.
Yes, Kim Riley, again, for the record. This is a contract for Creative Bus Sales for the purchase of three fixed route buses in the amount of $519,509.31. The award, I mean, the funding sources are two FTA 5307 awards. One of them is no match requirement. It was the ARPA funds that you had previously approved. The other is a 15% match, and we have approximately $50,000 remaining in local jurisdiction cash match to cover that.
Okay. Questions for Kim?
Only, Kim, what do you do with the old buses?
Well, we have some that are going to be used for spare parts. We do have one that may be salvageable, and we'll go through the county asset process for that. We're having them all appraised right now. If they exceed $5,000 in value, then we have to get approval from FTA to surplus them, and then they tell us at that time whether they want a portion of the amount that we receive. If it's less than that, then we would just follow county policy.
Thank you.
Yeah, Julina, go right ahead.
Kim, that's Julina. Just a quick question on that match. You said ARPA funds, but did you mean CARES or CARE funds?
No, there was a special, there was a special funding opportunity. We had a special allocation, direct recipients through FTA that was ARPA-funded.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Not the county, it's not the county's ARPA pool.
Oh, okay.
Okay, no other questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the contract for the purchase of three fixed route buses with Creative Bus Sales.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion carried. Item 13, Resolution 2021-103 for Fair Housing Policy in our Resource Management Office. Go right ahead, Kim. Kim?
Oh, sorry, I had my mute on. This is another item that is an application requirement for Hand-Handle Village water, the water system.
So, Kim, can I ask how much you think this is gonna cost the county, or is this included in? Because I don't think we're getting any admin fees out of this. I think it's just PAC, right? Because it looks like we're supposed to publish.
Correct.
We're supposed to go out to different private businesses and kind of pitch this policy.
PAC is managing all of that end of things. So the public notice, all of those things, PAC is actually, we have an agreement with them, and so they're facilitating those processes.
Okay.
We just have to bring everything through the board for approval, so that they can fit the application.
Okay, so just making sure there's no cost to the county to comply with this fair housing policy.
Correct. Other than the work that Jody and I have, you know, put in just getting this information, acting as middlemen at this point.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion?
I move that we approve Resolution 2021-103 for Fair Housing Policy and RMO.
I'll second.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, motion's carried. Item 14, Boat Launch Pass Discounts, B-O-C-C. Leslie?
So we had a request from a disabled veteran about boat launch discounts. And so Nick and I talked about it a little bit. Once again, he's not able to join us. So this is just a preliminary conversation to see if there's appetite for it. But what I thought was, when somebody comes to the county to apply for 100% disabled vet benefits on their homeowner's exemption, that they could then take that proof of acceptance from the assessor, take it down to Parks and Waterways, and get their discounted boat launch pass, if that's something that the board would want to consider.
Bill?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Okay, so then I will just instruct Nick to gather the pertinent information and talk to legal, and then we can bring it back before us for approval.
Fine. I don't think we need a motion here, do we?
We don't. We're now into the discussion items.
Got it. Okay. All right, then. And that concludes our action items. Going on to status update. First item is facilities expansion. Leslie?
Yes, so I met with KCSO and heard their concerns with the different options that were laid out before us. And then the, be- I don't think we're gonna wait till December to make our next step. I can't tell you what the next step is, but I think after this week, some things will be presented that we will then be able to move forward, potentially with looking at redesign for the connecting to the Justice Center and that. So we're, I think we're gonna be able to go forward before December, I guess is what I'm saying, and we'll be able to talk about it next Tuesday.
Okay, good. Makes sense. PAC Airport Lease? Stephen, were you gonna, do you want to help us out here?
He didn't, he didn't know he was gonna be called on. Commissioners, as we discussed last week, we're still working towards a kind of a draft lease agreement with a graduated step process in there. I was out of the office all last week at a conference, so I just got back Friday, so. Kim is out of the office today, so.
How much longer would you figure? Couple of weeks?
Probably have something by next week that we can present, I think.
Okay, good.
The issue is we have to find and make sure that the legal description is still accurate. Because there was some issues with the existing legal, because a road goes through it.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. The financial snapshot was presented last week.
Right, so it'll be November.
So the next one is November. Impact fee analysis?
Later in the month. I just got back.
Okay. The only thing I can add to that, and I'm still waiting for a callback from Chief Keely at EMS. And I'll mention this, well, you were on last week, but I'll mention it again. I guess they're expecting that from every new residential construction, and I don't know what, what state this is in. I don't know if this is proposed or, probably not approved yet, but they're looking at somewhere around $120 per unit for every new- but they're looking at somewhere around $120 per unit for every new residential home that's, that's constructed.
And that's only in their service area?
That is correct. Yep, that's their service area. That is correct. Okay. Then moving on from there, the North Lot Land Sale.